I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a work session of the Oregon City Commission. Today is Tuesday, June the 9th. And around the table we have...
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Larry Patterson, City Manager.
Daphne West, Commission President.
Denise Pius, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director.
Scott Archer, Community Services Director.
Jim Lefler, Human Resources Director.
Mike Conroy, Public Safety Chief.
Dan Replock, Community Development.
Nancy Iced City Reporter.
Colin Byder, Oregonian.
Ben Wagner, citizen.
Joe Davis, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association.
David Noel, IT Supervisor.
I can make my way in.
Mike Ferri from Samhain, Oregon City.
William Gifford, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association with CIC.
Marge Hurd, Nourmentinger House.
Oh, I'm already...
Great. Because tonight we have a big agenda of important discussion items. So, as we... Before we get started, does anyone have anything at this time that they would like to add to future agendas, either work sessions or City Commission? If you don't, you can always add them later as well. Like, I'm the City Manager, right? So, let's move into discussion items. The first one is the task force that we talked about for Carnegie Center and Ermitinger House.
And I'll turn to Mr. Archer. You do have a copy of what we had handed out before in regards to a proposed process, but again, we're open to wherever the Commission wishes to go with this.
Yes. I put it your places, the... By the way, if anybody needs extra copies of these, we've got them up here. Thank you, William. Just an outline of the process that we had proposed and discussed with you previously at, I think, in another work session. Basically, running June through the end of the year where we would hire a facilitator and...
Go ahead.
Oh, just wait until you... Make sure you're all right. Essentially, we just proposed that we would, as we had previously discussed, hire a facilitator and then do some background and research in August. And we've discussed developing a steering committee. And again, I'm just talking about the Carnegie Center portion of this. So, and then September, October, doing our committee meetings, public input, public meetings, and then developing recommendations and presenting those to the Commission by November, December. We can do this differently if you'd like. This is just something that we had put in front of you before for consideration. We're kind of getting to that point where we need to have direction. And then the other piece that was added, I think, after we first discussed this with the Commission, was some type of similar task force or maybe combining efforts regarding Ermitinger House. I don't know, you know, if these are kind of two different types of considerations. I think operationally they are because we're trying to make a decision about what the use of the Carnegie Center is, whereas with the Ermitinger House, I think it's just kind of a broader scope of what we're doing there. So, I don't know what the... I guess part of this is just getting some feedback from the Commission so we have a good sense of direction as staff.
I think that in these times when we ask volunteers to do things, that they need to be asked for a very specific task. So, I think this is two very specific tasks that can be done in a short period of time because, again, we'll get the greatest, I think, use of the expertise of volunteers by doing that. I would also not call them steering committees. I'd call them task forces or APAC committees.
Sure.
But I think a task force that has a specific direction, for me, would be the way to go. And I think that to appoint people to those committees, to me, would be two different types of expertise needed, so if...
Staff agrees with you. I think that's what we're thinking. We see it as two separate things, but we weren't sure where the Commission was at on that, so...
Yes, Daphne?
Scott and Denise, I see it as two different issues too. And the Carnegie, I'd love to see it wrapped up by December. That'd be just great. And task force, I agree. And the Ermitinger House, I think maybe we can wait on it just a tad here and see what the... Our consultant says with CHP and hang on from there because maybe there'll be a little bit more information to work with by then. I mean, that's just a thought.
I'm not entirely... No. I'm not entirely sure how that's connected to CHP, but... So, I guess I would ask that question.
It's our end of the day.
I don't see the connection to CHP with the House. And I do think they're two separate, completely separate things, so I hope that there's... Yeah. When we were looking at this, I was hoping it wasn't a task force for both things, that it was two separate things, and I think that's right. The timeline, you know, I think any timeline is too long for the Carnegie because we have the jewel of our city sitting there empty, and we are renting buildings and buying buildings, and it still sits. And so, even this timeline seems too long. But at least we're in the right process in talking about it. I think it's definitely important to open this up to as many people as possible. I know that's going to... This is going to be a hard process because even within a small group, it hasn't been easy because everyone really cares about this building and has their own vision for it. But I think we need to definitely go through the process and listen to everybody because this is a very, very important piece of our city, and it needs to be open. And hopefully, in my mind, it stays as a use that is completely open to the public, so...
I think that's... I guess, just knowing our city's stretched resources, I think I'd like to see one following the other. The Carnegie Task Force that we've talked about and is in our, you know, the goals for the Commission, and then maybe the Ermitinger House will follow that. I think that would really not stretch us quite so much. And there could be overlap of some people on those committees as well, and I would hate to have that overlap as well. Daphne?
When we do the Carnegie, we're... I'm sure you'll do the current budget or limitations or implications on it. And then I'm wondering, because the original use was a library, if we could consider having our new library director or somebody from the library involved on it because there might be some options there of returning it to a history or a reference center. And then my other thing is, I don't know where the Carnegie Center task force has... I've been hearing things... Oh, gosh, it's amazing what you hear. It's not going to be just limited to the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, is it?
Oh, no.
Yeah. If I could, I think...
Somebody asked me that on the street today and was quite concerned.
I think in looking at this issue, I think there's some things that the Commission will want to consider in putting the task force together, and I think there are these things. What is the specific charge of the task force? Do you have parameters for action that you want them to discuss? What is, with the recommendation comes forward, what is the city's role? How is whatever is being proposed to be financed so that it lives on? And then finally, who comprises the task force?
Okay. You're not wanting that tonight. You didn't ask us to come prepared for that.
Next five minutes to begin.
Well, could the CIC do it?
No. No, no, no. This needs to be a task force that's dedicated to that, and we want people with expertise in facilities. We want people with expertise in nonprofits. We want people that are very tied to the neighborhood, people that are... That understand multiple use, people that have expressed interest in it. And I think there's just multiple layers of need and expertise that we can draw.
Yeah. If you can kind of think about those things and either one of two things, maybe ship those to us. We could put that list together of your individual thoughts, and we could have actually have that, if you wanted, at your meeting next Wednesday that you could discuss, or we could do that later.
I think it's a work session thing.
We've got time on the task force just in that we... If you look at the outline there, we've got June and July to get a facilitator onboard, which I want to emphasize, I really feel strongly about that part of it because I think this is going to be a complex and sensitive community discussion, that we really need an independent facilitator to help us with that process. So, we've got until August to get moving with the steering... Or, excuse me, the task force. And I think we could potentially, if it works for you, push this onto the next work session and then maybe have some ideas going by that point.
I think it's way... That's way more appropriate, and then we'll have an opportunity to think about it a little bit more as well. Rocky?
In regards to the Ermitinger House, I do have some concern about timeline in the sense of having the Ermitinger House task force put together after the Carnegie. And I understand the reasoning for doing that because of the fact that there might be some crossover, et cetera. But the Carnegie's in a lot better shape, and I don't know how many more winters the Ermitinger House is going to make it. And so, I think that's something that I have concerns about. Also, I think that with the discussion in the past couple of months about the House, there is a core group of people that have really shown interest in, one, trying to find resources for the House, two, committed to volunteering at the House and through lots of different projects. I know in the past, there was a Friends organization for the House. I know there's discussion about restarting that. So, my question, I guess, would be, is what is the Commission's feeling or staff's feeling about the interest in a group being formed for the House prior to a task force being created or working in conjunction with a task force, or maybe it's the same group? I don't really know. But I do know that there's various people in Oregon City right now that are desperately interested in starting immediately on some sort of effort to fix that house. And I think in some degree, we would like to try to do something before winter in respects to the windows and some other things. It's a bad, bad situation, and we were able to kind of tackle it mid-storm last winter, but only temporarily. And I worry about the House and how it's going to survive if we don't really start working on it immediately.
I think a Friends group is always a good idea. A Friends group is the group that usually does the resource raising. That, I think, is a separate issue though than the future of the House because I think that will be a broader group. But, gosh, yes, that poor thing, I need some money for it too, and it needs a sustained development. There hasn't been a Friends group for about 10 years, has there? It's been quite a long time.
It seems like just yesterday.
I know. It's been a while.
Sorry.
I guess the relationship with the Friends group to the city would be, you know, an issue. How does that work? Is it a 501(c)(3)? Is it... You know, how does it work? Where do the... How do the funds get raised and deposited and so... There would certainly be some technical issues to look at.
And I don't think... You know, that's why I mentioned it because I think that there's some interest in that, but that discussion hasn't really taken place. And I don't really want, you know, if there is an interest in putting a group like that together, that it doesn't conflict with what we're doing as creating this task force. And so, I think we really need to take a look at the process and how, you know, if a Friends group gets formed before, you know, we have some real task force focusing on the mission of the House, how that all works together, or is the Friends group kind of a standby until there is a task force assembled? I don't know. But I think that discussion needs to take place. And I think that we need to, as a city, not just rely on volunteers to maintain and raise money for our facilities, but we need to do it ourselves. And so, I really would like to see staff spend some time seeing, you know, what is out there. I know numerous grants have been brought to our attention for the House, none of which have been acted on. So, there is resources out there, and we're just not really actively looking for them. We're kind of relying on volunteers to do it. And I think volunteers are doing so much that we need to sometimes step up and assist, so...
Well, I think, just like Friends of the Library does resource development for library projects that can't be funded by the city, I don't see any conflict at all with a resource development group doing that because it's not... I think that that mission would be very different than the mission of a task force that's talking about the long-term operation because a resource group wouldn't be talking about operations.
Okay. I can have Ms. Banky do a little bit of research too to see if there's any grant funding that may be available somewhere that we could access.
Sure. Great.
Just add another comment. I guess, from the staff perspective, I think our big issue is understanding, you know, connecting all the dots together, like you've talked about just a little bit, is making sure that this Friends group or whatever they'd be called would be aligned with what the city's goals for that facility are, both in the short term and the long term. Because if we're working in opposite directions, it's not going to do either of us any good, so we make sure that. And I would completely support that thought. But as far as the task force idea, I think, to me, it seems that that's more of the long-term issue. And I think that's what we're really struggling with as a staff, is what's the city's commitment there? Because, to be honest, we're kind of not sure. I mean, financially, we don't put a lot of support into that, very, you know, very small amount budgetarily. We do lend staff support as we can. We have Harding too, basically. If not for them, the facility wouldn't be open to the public. And so, you know, I think that's the main thing that our... As staff, that we're looking for is to get to the big picture of what the long-term issues are there, and that's really what we figure out.
Well, and I would foresee that an official task force could make an official recommendation. I mean, I've been in constant conversation with National Park Service of, you know, please take another look.
We could revisit that.
Yeah. Revisit that. I mean, that truly could be a long-term sustainability plan. So, I would expect that a task force that's looking at the long-term viability of the House would take quite a different tack and, you know, leave no stone unturned in its ability to make recommendations for that.
Yeah. And I had a good conversation with Ms. Harding today, and there are some interesting concepts that could be considered. I think some of this, though it may not be directly connected, but I think some of the work going on right now around CHP, what comes out of that, may kind of lead in to...
It certainly could set a stage.
...how we address that issue as well.
Yeah. William, how to comment after you come up and introduce yourself, please?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name again is William Gifford. And as both co-chair of the McLaughlin Association and the Secretary of the CIC, I need to make a couple of comments, if I could, please, as I've been directed by our steering committee to approach City Council regarding the issue of Carnegie Hall's... Or, the Carnegie Building specifically. While the Neighborhood Association recognizes this, this is a citywide issue, we also want the Council to understand that it is in the heart of our neighborhood as well, and we have very close and near attachments to this building and would like to be a part of any process that is going to be helping decisions made on that. And maybe that's an assumption, but we want to make sure that it's on the record that the Neighborhood Association will be actively involved in any such task force in deciding what that building is going to be used for. And at a higher level, because it is citywide, it makes a lot of sense, as Commissioner West pointed out, that the CIC ought to be involved at some level in the fact that we are reaching out more and more to a wider base and that we would have opportunities. The last comment that I would have is that the city might consider some sort of partnerships with, and most probably nearby because they have the most direct impact, but nearby churches and businesses that I think that we ought to get both the churches and the businesses involved in that facility, and I just didn't want that aspect to be overlooked.
Oh, yeah. I think when we develop... In fact, I think what I would prefer to see as we develop this are the slots for the task force. So, you know, someone from the business community around it, someone from the business community someplace else, or, you know, things like that, two from the Neighborhood Association. Because I think that that... The makeup of the task force by, you know, area of influence is important.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Ready to move on on that one, then? So, we'll look at that in greater depth next.
Bring that back to you.
Thank you very much. Next, let's move on to the upcoming fireworks.
Another little kind of overview sheet. And again, for anybody that's here that would be interested, there's extra handouts. Mayor and Commissioner, we've got a couple of different issues here, kind of shorter term and then longer term. The short-term issue is that for this year's event, we are... We're funded for this year's event. What we're struggling with... We've been struggling with this for the last couple of years, and it's sort of reached a breaking point for us this year. And that is our ability to safely and successfully staff this event. It's become a real challenge. You're looking at about 50% of the entire department's recreation staff here, and I'm being literal. We really don't have full-time recreation staff.
I thought it was 75%.
Well, maybe. Well, we've got, you know, Kathy and Rochelle that always jump in and help out.
It depends on the day.
Maybe I'm exaggerating just a little bit, but the point is we're...
We understand.
We're dealing with an event that draws thousands of people. We've got... We do hire a security company. We've done that for the last couple of years. That's been a very good addition, and that was through some support by the Commission. What we've struggled with, and especially why it's an issue this year, is that it's a holiday, of course, and so it's hard to find staff that would really, you know, voluntarily want to work.
You don't want to give up your whole weekend.
It's also the midday of a three-day holiday.
The midday of a three-day weekend, so it's kind of double whammy this year. And so, we've kind of put out the all-call for, you know, any interested staff, and that was met with a resounding thud. We didn't exactly have a slew of folks wanting to work in the middle of a three-day weekend. And we do have some cost issues with, if they happen to be part of our union, there's pretty significant costs of overtime. So, what we are... What it's come down to is, you know, basically Denise and Rochelle running the event. We've managed to round up a little bit of our temp help, summer temps, I think some help from streets a little bit.
Well, if you look at your sheet, it has a personnel. Do I already have that? Yeah. Did we have them?
Yeah, those are...
Yes. Here is a full set of agents that doesn't have it. Sit where you want. Is it here?
Did I have it?
Welcome.
You've got it right here.
We are here.
So, our personnel is listed on here, and if you'll notice, there's tentatives. Our commitments are one seasonal in the morning, one seasonal in the afternoon, Rochelle and I, and one union on-call staff person to maintain the water tender. So, for a very large road closure section, barricades, unloading, loading barricades, you're looking at the workforce of all barricades, cones, and road closures. We have safety issues when it comes to the road closures at night. We're not qualified road personnel. The distance factors to make sure that we put them out safely, close the roads safely, and are ourselves in a safe position is up to us. We don't have the equipment to do road closure by ourselves. We don't have lit trucks. It's just we're getting to the point where safety has to be a factor.
What's your recommendation here?
Our recommendation is, we've talked to a management company that can provide the onsite management as well as some additional assistance. If it comes to pass that we are able to get one to two police reserves, that'll assist us in the ability to do the road closures a little safer. I don't know what to say as far as asking or assigning people that are... Have the ability to do the road closures or qualified to do the road closures. That would be through Public Works. And at this point, we don't have any volunteers, and...
So, our... The recommendation on the management company is, we've received a quote of about $3,500 for this year's event, and what we're asking for is some support from the Commission to bring that back as a follow-up budget item, to add $3,500 out of our contingency fund so that we can at least adequately manage this year's event. It's been especially tricky, as we said, because of all those factors and so... And we've... Denise has listed out all of the issues there in terms of all the different types of things you can see that we've got to deal with. That's for this year. Jumping into the bigger picture issue real quick and then if you want to revisit that, but we are... Our funding... The majority of our funding has come from the Metro Enhancement Grant Program, which we apply for that a year in advance so that we can plan accordingly. And as you all know, because you're on that committee as well, we did not make the funding list this year for the next Fourth of July celebration. There was some discussion at the Grant Committee that we would be able to backfill those funds and simply go out and raise those funds to the community, and I need to tell you, the Commission, that's going to be a major challenge. We do raise, I think, as you know, thousands of dollars for our Concerts in the Park Series. We have Rochelle, basically, besides doing all the other things she does to keep the pool functioning and do a great job of that. She's... She is our fundraiser for the Concerts in the Park Series and working with Denise. We're pretty well limited out on our staff time to be able to go out and do that and knock on doors and raise those funds. Plus, I think you get to a certain level with your business community where you keep asking and knocking on the doors, and you're knocking on the same doors. You've got to kind of select. And if I had to choose, frankly, whether we could provide eight to 10 wonderful summer concert events over the year or one Fourth of July event, I would say I would recommend putting our resources into the Concert Series. So, we're in a position where, frankly, I, at this point, without some further direction or some further method of funding, really, this is our last year of the Fourth of July celebration as it stands today.
Is there... I don't think music was funded. So, do you have a stage there? Did we...
We were funded through the OCCIT. Partial funding goes to the concert piece at the Fourth of July, so the concert...
Along with the other concerts?
Right. The concerts are fine for this year.
Okay. And the Fourth of July concert is too, so...
Yes. It was included in the OCCIT.
For this year.
And the event company will do all the personnel?
They will do some additional personnel on top of our current commitment of personnel.
Oh, so you're still obligated.
We're still obligated to have some of our city staff in there.
Okay. Are you... If you are uncomfortable about guaranteeing an event that can be staffed and run safely, I would suggest we don't... That we don't have it because that concerns me. I mean, I know that the event has gotten very different over the last few years, hence the security company, which I think has made it way more family-friendly. And I've been there for the last three years, so it's... I mean, these very reasons that we're discussing tonight are the reason that West Lynn and then Gladstone pulled out of it.
And that's another big part of this, is why we're in the position that we're in is because we've lost that partner.
No partners.
Yeah. We're doing it on our own.
We've assumed over the last couple of years, all of those things that West Lynn several years ago and then Gladstone more recently used to do, and it's become a huge burden. And so, it's a difficult thing for us to sit here and tell you because, on the one hand, it's a great community event, and it's hard for us as recreation professionals to say, "We don't want to do a really neat community event."
I'm concerned about what you're saying.
But the other part of my brain has to say to you, "I'm not totally comfortable," even though I think we can pull this off this year if we do the management company, even with that, I can't sit here with a straight face and tell you, "I'm 100% comfortable with that." And that's just the reality that we're having to...
Yeah. And that concerns me greatly. I hear that coming through loud and clear. The other thing that I believe is that, as, having been an events person for hundreds of years, is that there's less need in the community for the Fourth of July event on a weekend because people have the ability to pick up and go on a Tuesday night, a Monday night, a Wednesday night. It's a... We can't... We don't have the ability to go very far because it's a work... You know, it's the middle of a workday usually, work week. So, I don't know. So, I don't know, yeah, I'm leaning towards not doing it if you don't, you know, feel comfortable about the safety of the event. But I would love to have a finale, because we've done this for so many years. And I guess I lament the fact that we don't have enough community gathering places, you know, where we all get together and do things, and this has been like that. Though, the attendance during the concert does sort of fluctuate, and people kind of, you know, do tend to come more for the fireworks, but I don't know, I need to hear more confidence from you.
Hey, I'm not, I'm afraid that I can't give you much more than I told you, and that's, and I'm just being very
Yeah, you need to be candid.
And, you know, again, it is, it's a tough place to be, because this is, it's a great, it's a great thing to bring the community together, but, you know, looking at it from the staff side of things, we've, I guess, just, it's been kind of, we've had these types of concerns the last couple of years. We've been sort of, it's sort of grown each year, the concerns have grown each year. And we've kind of hit that, that big point this year, because on top of everything else of the normal concerns, we've hit this, it's a Saturday, a three-day weekend, and it's just been an odd thing where all of a sudden, it's like the perfect storm. We're really, yeah, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I'm completely confident that it's, that it's okay. We can run the event, and we can, we can carry it forward, but not, not great amount of confidence in saying that we can do it without, without those concerns. I don't know if I can answer it any better than that.
Rocky?
One of the things that, and it is, it's a great event, and that's the thing, it's, I hate seeing us lose events year after year, because we've lost a lot. But with your discussion about the concerts getting more and more sponsorships, we're getting several thousands of dollars worth of sponsorships this year, I'd like to remind everybody that we also doubled the Metro Enhancement Grant this year for concerts in the park. And so I can't help but think that if we would have given the same amount to concerts that we've given every year, we could have saved the fireworks show. And that was the point that I made that night. And I, I think that, you know, I understand, I understand the need, in staff's point of view, on, for the sound system, et cetera. Oh, that's ironic.
Speaking of sound system.
But, you know, even if we would have funded concerts in the park with a couple thousand dollars more than they had in all the previous years, we still would have been able to grant money for the fireworks. And I think that really bothers me. So I think in a way, we've, you know, sacrificed one event to help another.
Well, now, wait a minute. Let me, let me ask that too, because what I'm not hearing you saying is you don't have enough money.
We didn't, we didn't put the fireworks, we didn't pit the fireworks against the concert as far as grant funding.
No, not intentionally, but that's what, that's what
OCCIT was strictly the concerts, and we applied Metro Enhancement for the fireworks, two separate funding entities.
And two separate?
For us, we're not saying that we don't have the funds for the concerts. We were kind of under some
No, but if you, if you would have asked for the same amount of money from OCCIT, you could have also asked for firework money from OCCIT, and you probably would have gotten it.
Oh, you don't know.
Well, I know, but doubling a money, doubling what you ask for, for grants, and from one year to another, and then saying we have no money for one event, it sounds like it wasn't good planning.
Okay, well, let's get back to, because I, it sounds to me like if you had more money, it wouldn't, this wouldn't solve the problem.
That is correct.
That's what I'm hearing.
But we're one year in advance.
Yeah, we're one year out, but I think we would
The concern that I'm hearing here, and I really, maybe I haven't had as deep a conversation I need to, but it's a volunteer, or lack of volunteers, and the thing that I hear that concerned me, if we cannot cover those aspects, and particularly street closures appropriately
Well, I know, that's what bothers me.
Though, chances are we could do it, and nothing would happen. If anything does occur
I'm concerned about liability.
We probably have a liability of the city that we're exposing. Something we probably need to bring in our insurance company and take a look at, and I, if that's the case, I'm afraid I know what their recommendation would be, which is not very pretty either.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if the, you know, the public would understand, events like this are being cut back this year. Music events are being cut back, because fundraising is difficult, sponsors are very difficult to get, and volunteers aren't necessarily, but in an event like this, it's really difficult in the middle of a three-day weekend. Scott? Oh, Daphne, would you, you have a question?
Other Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say too, I mean, I'd be sorry to lose the event, but I understand the security, and that's, safety is the top issue, but, you know, sometimes a community has to lose an event to see how much they value it. And maybe there will be people stepping up next year, but it is difficult, it's been continuing difficult since Gladstone and West Lynn have pulled out. And they've left us holding the bag on that.
I'd like to emphasize that, that point, because that's what I wanted to say, was that, again, with what you were saying there, that it's more about the logistics and our ability to run this event, and it's less about the money. The money, the funding is an issue, but it's less about that frankly. We're getting to a point where if, we would have had this conversation with you about this year's event regardless of the funding for next year's event. And if we had been funded next year, we probably would have had to rethink what our long-term plan was there. So the one thing I do want to point out is we're less than 30 days away from July 4th, and if we're going to not do this this year, which I'm sensing that there might, might be some support to do that, we need to start moving forward on our publicity to let people know that, and let the community know that, so.
Well, before I give my stamp of approval, I need to hear greater confidence from staff, and that's not what I'm hearing. I mean, heard from the very beginning, it sounds like you're really not secure in it, and so I think that's absolutely bottom line for me. And so, I mean, reluctantly, I would say, if that's how you feel about it, I would reluctantly say that prevails. Safety and security of our citizens and our staff, I think, is very, very, very key. I don't know, the rest of you?
I concur. I don't know if it's something we have to bring to the Commission to vote, or what, or it's just a staff issue.
No, I think it's a staff issue.
It's an event.
Well, that's how it is, and if you can't do it, you can't do it, if you're unable to do it.
Yeah, and again, if we authorize more money, that doesn't sound like the issue. So to me, it sounds like a very difficult, that we're in a very difficult situation. So.
The only mechanism that, where you could do that, is we would have to dictate to our unions that they have, that you have to have folks out there, and again, you will increase the cost by the overcount cost we'll be paying.
You okay with that?
It's a money issue.
Okay, I think you have the option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry to be the, errors are bad news, but we just sometimes need to be honest with you, when things get to that point.
Thank you, and I appreciate you trying. It's very detailed memo, so it looks like you worked hard to try to put it together. So, we've had a negative, can we go to a positive and move up the demo of the new city website? I assume it's a positive. I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, Daphne? Did you have something to say?
Well, I was just gonna say, I know our Parks Department works very hard. I was at the Friends in the Cemetery meeting this morning and listening to all their budget concerns and what they're stretched on staff for, and how good of a job they do with so few people. So I've been hearing Parks issues
Every department.
Yeah, is already today.
Yeah, so thank you. Okay, so we're on 3E. Hey, David?
Hi, I'm David Knoll.
Everybody know David?
I do have a new role at the city, I'm the IT supervisor, and as the slide will point out, formerly known as
Grab, oh, there you go. For the record, you might want to introduce yourself again, in case I didn't pick up on our, for our Bass TV audience.
My name is David Knoll, I'm the IT supervisor here at Oregon City, and I've put together what we hope to be about a 10-minute presentation on the new and revamped website, and a little bit of history about how we got to where we are now. This is a teaser of the new website homepage, and we've put in quite a lot of work since last November on this, both community leaders and staff, and some consultants have also done a fair bit of work. To put the new website into perspective, in 2000, when I first was hired on at the city, we had a webpage, I think it had 10 pages, I'm not quite sure about that, but we've expanded that greatly, and last year we were
Wow.
166 pages with, I'm sure more than 10 gig of data behind it. We've done some in-house redesigns, all by staff, using pretty basic software, web development tools, and have not had to rely on outside development costs particularly. We've bought some Band-Aid applications that have ridden on top of our current system. But basically, we've spent less than $10,000 since the website first was put into place. That ended at the end of 2008, but I'll tell you about that in a little bit. We have put new applications on top of the existing website. So in late 2008, we've gotten a number of requests from staff and the community to have better communication tools, easier access to update website information, news items, et cetera. So with those in mind, we did a lot of research for about a year on what kind of update we wanted to do, and hired a consulting firm to do some graphic work. With the prospect of a website revamp ahead of us, we thought it would be a good idea to make it look nice. So that involved a logo redesign and some graphic elements that would sort of tie all of the elements that we wanted to project to the community together. So we have two different firms that came on to help us with that. Alchemy Creative did the logo and branding, and helped us develop our new logo. At the back of your packets, I believe you have some paperwork that shows that. And then the website design itself was put together by Aha Consulting. They're both local firms here in, actually, West Lynn, the new Oregon City.
No, 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 no.
No, wait, I think I had that backwards, actually.
It's West Oregon City.
Right.
West Oregon City.
That's right. So as we went through the development process, we did want to keep in mind the Commission goals of sustainability and communication with our community, and all of the other elements that make us a historic place to live and work. We extended the logo redesign to all of our business cards and stationery, and hopefully we'll continue to put out the new logo as we open our new city hall. So I think you've gotten the message that we've got a new website to show, so without any ado, I'll just skip ahead and show it. Renee, can you put that onto the browser?
Trumpets, trumpet sound.
The sound?
Yeah, trumpets.
Can somebody do trumpets?
Trumpets.
So, the front page here, and Renee, I don't know if you can help me with this, do I, can I control this with this mouse? Okay, I'll have to come back and address you from the rear here. So the front page on the website here, I just wanted to go over some navigational elements. Along the top bar are four main website areas, about Oregon City, city departments, city government, and online services. I can point?
Yeah, the other end.
Only the IT coordinator, I think you need to
On the back, underneath, where your fingers are. There we go.
Ah, okay. And if this was a real mouse, I could actually do the pulldowns for you. Renee, are you able to help with that? I think we're still on track for our 20-minute presentation. So about Oregon City, has some
It takes 10 a minute ago.
Along the top are main areas of our website, and you can get to various departments and features, which I'll show you in a moment. About Oregon City, Renee, if you go back to that and go to the
Video.
I want to show you. Go ahead and go to the historic information, the top selection there. So about Oregon City has some community facts. We have the ability to put images that are displayed from other areas of the site.
Yeah.
I hope you'll continue to support me as I come back next time. And then Renee, if you back up to about Oregon City, there's another feature there, the image gallery. We are now able to, the photo gallery, basically post a project worth of photos in a format that anybody can see. Under about Oregon City, Renee, if you go to the photo gallery, yes, and as it quickly responds, so we have the ability to post project photo collections. The next tab over, under city departments, will obviously be the city departments, and I wanted to show you the, let's go to planning. I need my cheat sheet. No, I'll just wing it. I'll definitely wing it. Nope, I don't. Okay, well, I wanted to make sure I was hitting all the elements that I wanted to show you. Let's go on to city government. Under the city commission area, this will be a particular concern of yours, I'm sure, if you go ahead and click on that, Renee.
I'm trying.
You get a wonderful presentation of our city commission and some information behind that. On the right-hand side of the screen is a video that will play our most recently posted video, and by clicking on different elements around that, you can select other videos for, from other commission meetings or community events, whatever we have recorded. And Nancy, I think if you escape out of that, it'll leave fullscreen, and go back to our website.
Where do you want me to go?
Just press escape, and you'll get back to seeing the website, we hope. Lovely as the
The frozen amber.
So the fourth major navigational element along the top of the website is the online services, and we have a number of online services available to citizens and staff. One of the new ones is a citizen request tracking tool. It is not implemented yet, mainly because the website will not be live until July 1st, but this will enable the public to log a citizen request and get a tracking number. Staff, that request will then be emailed to appropriate staff and sent into a routing queue. The citizen can then log on again and check the status of their request. City staff can do a pre-programmed report and sit at their desk and hit one button and get whatever kind of report they'd like to see for that day, along with some other pretty nifty mapping and reporting tools.
David, is, now, is that, we had a report at a Clackamas Cities Dinner on companies that do the citizen request piece, so you're doing that internally?
No, we're not doing that internally. We have purchased a web-based software, and it's actually a hosted service, for really the, far cheaper than we could have ever developed something like this.
What's the name of it?
It's IWork.
Oh, okay.
I-W-O-R-K.
Yeah, one of the ones that we saw.
It's approximately $1,000 a year for the licensing for this.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's going to be a really great tool for our needs.
Yeah, I was really impressed with it, too.
So moving on from the four top elements, along the right-hand side, we'll have contact info, a search tool, and latest news, and upcoming events, particular to the department that you are currently browsing. Along the top and bottom, you'll have a footer with site information and sitemap, and all the department links listed. Along the top is also a contact us area, and login information. Apparently I have no rights, because there's no login, but staff will Apparently, I have no rights because there's no login, but staff will have the ability to log in and post and update information according to their privileges. That was one of the main concerns that we wanted to do on the website, was to put the power of updating in the hands of people that have the information. It's, we have a large staff and a large community that demand a lot of updates, and it's hard to do that effectively when it funnels through just a few people. So we really rely on our staff and community to keep us updated on posting to the website. So we've done the top bar, we've done the right-hand side, and along the front, Nancy, can you go back to the Oregon City homepage, clicking on our brand-new logo? That'll get you there, too. So this main portion of the website here, the top element of that is a rotating image. And we can promote different webpages or pieces of information to that area that then rotate. We can have four to six rotating images at a time that highlight different elements we'd like to promote. And similarly, there are four spotlight elements down lower, which also display information from other departments at the city. And staff has the ability to put their page into a queue and promote that to the top. The future brings, we're looking forward to, after this initial launch is over, we'll be looking at online payments for tickets and purchasing of products and other bills, hopefully. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
So I'll be able to pay my parking tickets online?
Well, won't that be convenient?
I wasn't aware that you had any.
Shit's gonna lie.
No, but I know that, I noticed that when I got one in, going to the legislature last time, the City of Salem has, it's really, really cool, so I'm so glad to see that.
Well, if we can make our online payments slick and inviting, that's worth it.
Definitely.
So with the citizen requests, so you're not on that page now, but will they be, how will they see the answer?
When you, when a citizen submits a request, when they hit the submit button, they'll get a numbered identifier for that request. And at any time, they can go to the website and punch in that number and see the latest activity on that event.
Oh, wow, very cool.
And when staff either closes it or changes the status, the person who submitted the request can also be notified.
From, if this is the scene that we had the presentation on, then staff also, because it's our city manager, could see what staff has been involved and whether it was taken care of or not. And it should be really a good tracking system, but, you know, for those.
That's correct. I think Larry has in mind already his Monday and Friday queries all ready to go. So it'll be a pretty simple process to check on whatever he wants to take a look at.
Yeah, okay, good. That's a great tool. Rocky?
I have to comment, as a graphic designer or background with a graphic design major, it's really nice. And I think anyone that's looked at the city's website in the past can see the difference. It's readable, it's very well organized, it's really beautiful. So I only have one really picky comment, and-
You're sounding like me at our web meetings.
Yeah. What's so great is, on this particular category, where it's very obvious that all these are Oregon City people and Oregon City places, and I'm assuming one of my pet peeves is putting really obvious clip art into categories, and if you look on the planning department, hopefully, we fill that with some pictures of our planning department people or some projects. Yeah, click on that. Look at those guys, they're not from Oregon City. But it's really, it's really nice. And I think, I mean, just some of the pictures that aren't necessarily recognizable to everybody in Oregon City, like the bust of McLaughlin, and there's some really amazing images around Oregon City that I think if we can incorporate in, in just the way that the colors with that particular picture and the logo, and it's really well done. So I hope that, you know, that continues to, you know, look that nice as it goes forward. And I guess the only other question is, there are several departments that I think have their own websites, I think the police department does, are those all going to be kind of consistent? Are they still going to be separate, or?
Yes, the websites that the department, that the police have in Parks and Rec, they all have different looks and feels.
Right.
And this will have a much more consistent feel between departments, but you will be able to tell that you're in a different department and there will be other, you know, associated information. I'd like to comment on your inclusion of the artwork and the people involved. We did, William Gifford and Mayor Ellis Norris were actively involved with the startup of the logo and the graphics, and we really couldn't have done this project without the community efforts. We had a lot of citizens submit photos, and some of the graphics that you see here are still preliminary. We still have about three weeks, two and a half weeks to go before launch. So much of what we have up here already is still being tweaked.
That brings up another guest's question and also a comment. With the photo contest coming up, I think that will provide us with a lot more, so hopefully some of those could be incorporated. And is there a way possibly for citizens to be able, I guess, other than email, I mean, email would always work, but that people could send photographs in?
Yes, this site, it's designed to be flexible and open-ended, so we can set permissions for either people with logins to submit information, files and images, or anonymous users as well. So submission of photos, as well as all kinds of forms and information and submittals of personal information, if we wanted to develop a newsletter, listserv or something, we can do that.
You have to come up to the microphone, please. It's a picky.
This is beautiful. I'm very impressed. Thank you very much, Leah, for all the hard work you did on this. I'm, of course, my interest is in neighborhood associations, and I know the staff now has, will have permission to update their own pages. Will neighborhood associations have some similar capabilities, or what do you see right now? I didn't see anything at all, but, oh, there's neighborhoods.
We do have the very basics of the neighborhood page developed, and we haven't made decisions one way or the other on what kind of community contributions we have. We do have a history of allowing communities or community committees, and especially the neighborhood associations, to post meeting information on the calendar. We haven't decided exactly to what extent that's going to be included in other elements of the website.
Our newsletters and so on.
Yes, I think that's a great use of all of your input, if we can accept those and make it slick.
Maybe you'd like to make a presentation to the CIC about this, about this project as well?
I'll ask our CIC coordinator.
Okay.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Very quickly, introduce yourself, please.
Kathy Hogan. Yes, it looks really great. The only thing I was wondering now, to make it easier on this ignorant girl that doesn't understand the computer very well, the minutes, because it could be easier for me to find them, because I don't go to all the meetings, but I like to find the minutes. But the minutes are really kind of short, brief, and it's not like all the people's testimony is put in there anymore. It's kind of their-
Well, you've got the right person at the helm, if you're wondering about minutes. Nancy, I can show you what is there, and I can vouch that it is getting better every day, and there's a lot of information available quite quickly after board meetings.
Yes, they're not so short, and they have everything that's going on.
We have video streaming now, so you can-
Yeah, but my computer isn't real good on that. I can get the minutes and we're done.
You can go to the library and do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't know that it'll change the nature of minutes. Yeah, that's, that's-
So they're going to be under, sorry, city recorder, that's where the minutes are going to be now, or commission meetings? No, you're just on the city recorder. They'll be under city meetings.
Yeah, I could be talking on the fly here about this, but-
It should be boards and commissions, that's where it is now.
Okay.
No, actually-
Isn't it now?
The minutes for-
Or city meetings, there it is, yeah.
City meetings Nancy is getting to right now.
No, it's right there, yeah.
This isn't quite developed yet. I mean, it's partially developed, but you will be able to access the minutes and the videos and the agendas on a page similar to what we have now.
So as Nancy is showing you, what you're seeing is our current page that displays videos, and that's going to be changed over to the new look and feel that will display the same.
With easy navigation.
I just want to compliment our IT department. It is one of the, when I first came into office, and actually, I think, when I went to Maui to, and we established our Friendship City program, Maui had everything that was way better than ours. I mean, it was, their programs were incredible, their presentations, their city hall was incredible. We had staff out the Wazoo, and I was feeling kind of depressed about the things we didn't have, until the mayor of Maui said, however, you have an enviable website and your GIS capabilities are just incredible, we'd like to have one just like yours. So I puffed up, and I've heard that compliment to our GIS and our website and the ability to navigate throughout my term, and I want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
It's been good, and this update's going to be terrific.
Well, thank you. I hope the website has the same success as the GIS site has.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Their entire staff was from Washington State?
What? What else?
The entire staff was from Washington State, Wazoo.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hey, any more questions about that? All right, let's move on to the next.
I wanted to first apologize for being late.
Not sure you're hooked up, just sent here. Yeah, you're on.
I wanted to apologize for being late and indicate that for the foreseeable future, my work situation will be such that I will probably always have difficulty on Tuesdays of making a 5:30 meeting.
Okay.
And I was just wondering if you could move it back a half an hour to 6 for our work sessions.
Do you have a different day that is better? We used to meet on Mondays, we switched to Tuesday because of work, school schedules.
We could move to 6. Yeah, because it's just a rush hour situation that I'm conflicted with right now, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so if people can tolerate 6, I'd appreciate that.
6, okay for staff? 5:30 is better. I mean, we could move to Monday, except that we have a conflict with the room, I guess, don't we? And it'll be, every Tuesday will be the same.
Okay. I was also curious if I could get a quick synopsis of what the discussion on item A-
Yes, you can afterwards.
Okay. All right.
You can always pick up the Zoom after. Okay, let's move into the operations center finance plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to come and provide an update on what's going on with the Oregon City Public Works Center in terms of its master plan. I wanted to just review that we have been looking at doing significant redevelopment of the Public Works site at 122 South Center Street, because the buildings and the facilities there need to be, need to be replaced because they're undersized, outdated, deteriorated. The office storage is poor, the shop building is not anywhere near the size it needs to be. So, and to reiterate, too, that that building has been operating as the Public Works Center for as long as, as long as I know, I think it's been at least 50 years. And there has been nothing done to that facility other than painting, meeting room remodel, and new office furniture. And in the meantime, the city's grown to over 30,000 people, and, you know, we need to get really serious about the facility that we use to do all the things that Public Works does.
Have you thought about some trailers?
So this, this plan that we've been working on will not only take us into the 21st century with Public Works, but also meet the needs for the next 15 to 20 years at the site for the city. So in 2005, those of you that were with us then, we completed the operations facilities plan, which was for 122 South Center Street, and it was accepted by the city commission at that time. And then, and we've been kind of doing a bunch of background stuff that this recommended, like acquiring the building at 116 South Center, and kind of gearing up to do the land use application for implementation of the plan. In the 2008-09 budget, we budgeted for completing the land use application for master plan, which is one of the land use applications we have in our zoning code. And this plan now also amended the original plan to consolidate the operations and the engineering groups. We think that's going to be a real good improvement for the department. In this, in that process, in the land use process, we've had extensive dialogue with the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and we're in the process of the planning commission review for that master plan land use application. And then, in the meantime, I've been developing a financial plan for master plan implementation. And as you may recall, the 2009-10 budget includes establishing a building fund so that we can deposit funds from the utilities to accrue money for the construction. The master plan itself redevelops the site in four phases, and what I've given you is drawings that show the first, show the four phases, and then accompanied by a list of all, quite a few of the details included in each phase. So you can tell each phase is fairly complicated and fairly comprehensive redevelopment of the site. Given the fact that these are the phases that are needed to build up all the improvements, and it's, they are, there's a sequential plan for these phases, this is a kind of project that, that it makes sense to program the phases using a cash flow approach to funding, rather than needing to have all the money at once to do something all at once, given the fact that we're kind of doing, while we do this, we do that, and then we move that there, and then we move that there. It really is a nice sequential construction project. And so what I've done then is prepare a spreadsheet that shows how I proposed to the city commission to indeed fund the master plan. It's a 10-year plan, and there's, the cost estimates that I used in this plan were developed by the architect's cost estimator, so they're very experienced in doing these kinds of cost estimating. It included, the numbers that they gave us for each phase, then they had applied the schedule over a period of eight years, and they applied interest rates ranging from 3% to 6%. So I feel like they're fairly good interest rates to, or inflation rates, not interest rates, inflation rates, so that we can anticipate the real value of the dollar. Of course, you can never do that with complete certainty, but I feel like it's a good, a good solid estimate. And then we also, these, these costs also include not only the hard construction costs, but also the soft costs, which is the design and permitting costs. So we feel like we have good cost estimates to build our financial plan on. And then, I also did some research on what we would, what it would, if we, if we, instead of doing a cash flow approach, we decided to take out a loan, take out a big, big fat loan to do the whole project. I wanted to see, you know, how much would we pay in administration, interest, et cetera, and David Wimmer helped me with this. And it really is, for the, for our ratepayers, obviously depending on what our interest rate would be for that money, we save a considerable amount of money, anywhere from $8 million to $13 million because of the cost of interest. So, and that, of course, would also be a 20-year loan, so it's, this is 10 years. You save up the money, you spend it, and you're done. So I wanted to give you an update on this. The next steps we'll be going through is, we're hoping to complete the land use process- The next steps we'll be going through is we're hoping to complete the land use process and get, be optimistically positive about getting an approval, and...
You mean the planning commission level?
Yes, that's right. And if, if that indeed does occur, then I will come back to you with the finance plan again. Larry and David and I might spend a little time tweaking it, thinking about scheduling, et cetera, but I think this is a really good foundation for it. And then, we would want to bring the finance plan and the construction program back to the city commission for your approval, so then we can move forward with certainty to implement the plan. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or, you know.
What is before the planning commission right now? Is it Phase One only, or the?
It's the master plan.
It's the whole?
It's the master plan. It shows all the phases, so it's a clear understanding of what the, what this build out means. And then, as we do the phases, we would have to go through site plan and design review with the planning department as well. Then that looks at the details. And we're also in the historic review board zone, so we would be going through historic review on the architecture of building, buildings, and multiple land use processes in front of us. But this is the first step, is to get the master plan approved.
Okay. Daphne?
So I'll just kind of recap here. You think you can build this within four years with, if everything is approved? And each stage is, Phase One is going to go through its own site plan and design review, and then, and the next one will be, when the time comes, you'll go? So you're going to build it in four and pay for it in 10?
Well, each phase takes about three years to get through. So the first phase takes about three years, second phase takes about three years. And there may be some flexibility in that, you know, sometimes...
Carryovers, yeah.
Yes, right. But we, I tried to lay it out so that we would not, so that we would be able to make sure we had money in the bank to pay for whatever phase we were doing.
Oh, it looks really good.
Nancy, could you give us a brief review of the, kind of, the guiding principles that you're using as you lay out, to echo here, as you, as you lay out this, this plan? I see that there is extensive landscaping. How, how are you thinking about fitting onto the site? And what, what are you, what are you actually doing there?
Well, what we'll be doing ultimately is moving all of the truck storage and bin storage to the upper level.
Upper level.
And regrading the upper level, leaving some of the natural topography in place. And then, take, we have one rock outcropping right in the center of the, of what you see as a parking area in, in Phase One. And in order to make the site, provide the capacity we were trying to get out of it, that rock outcropping will be taken away. But then, once we do the grading, then, what we would really like to do is do a very good job of keeping some of the landscaping and then setting the landscaping up so that it provides a really nice natural surrounding amongst the, our actual facilities, screening to the, to the neighbors. And then, since we sit right up against Waterboard Park, we, you know, we do what we'd be looking for is native plantings and natural vegetation that just fits right into that kind of a setting. And of course, we have the basalt cliffs, so we have this fabulous natural setting that we want to kind of complement with our development. And, and we'll do some stormwater management. You know, we're not sure, and as the next 10 years goes on, we might see all different new kinds of creative ways to manage stormwater, but we want to sort of be at the leading edge on whether it be collecting the rainwater for use in our pleasure trucks, or for use for irrigation, or, you know. Hopefully, we don't need to do irrigation because our landscaping won't need to be watered, but that kind of thing. We also wanted to do the main office building. Our architect has said that he thinks the good goal for that would be the lead silver, which is fairly, it's, it's attainable, and it's also affordable, very admirable. And I'm not an architect, but they, he felt that would be a really good goal for us. And, well, I think the idea is to build up and not out on this site, to try to maximize the property we already have. And also, we've been working with the neighborhood extensively, trying to make sure that we're doing things in a way, and we're monitoring things in a way, that we can address concerns that could come up as we grow, you know, looking at noise, air quality, those kinds of things, really trying to, we've been, we've been in that neighborhood for a really long time, and we want to stay there, and we also want to make sure we remain good neighbors. So we've been very interested in working with everybody to respond to concerns.
Okay, Daphne?
On the top level, will trucks be going in and out on John Adams? Or are they going to turn around gate? I'm trying to figure this out. Will they be going down over to the left or to the south here to go to center?
What we're doing is we're keeping center open as a two-way, and the, the end, one of the key things, we have to probably be just a teeny bit careful because in case this ever came back to the city commission as a land use review body. But I can just give you facts.
Oh, okay.
The, right now, John Adams Street goes through the site.
Right, right.
And it's actually used, it's private. It's not a public street.
It's not a?
But it's, no, it's, but it's, it's always been open, so we've been really hesitant about just putting a gate across that. That's not really the way to do so. And so through this master plan process, we are proposing that it be gated at each end and no longer allow cut-through traffic. And, but we would still maintain access off of both locations because John Adams Street has some very narrow spots along it. I've been working with John Lewis, and we think that the best thing to do is to allow our larger trucks to just go one way on South John Adams Street. So they would not be allowed to come both ways. And the best way to go is downhill rather than uphill because it's less noisy and less clunky. So that is, but then we'd go, you could go either way on, on the center street access location. Okay?
Rocket?
Do you know what year the current building was built?
I don't know for sure. I think, I've got photo, like, the 116 South Center, that was around in the 1930s. So I'm not positive, but somewhere in there, the, that vintage. And we have had a lot of historic review done. I mean, we hired a consultant, David Penneyard has done review of all of the buildings on site to evaluate them for historic preservation, et cetera. So that's all part of our master plan process.
You know, one of them is the beginnings of Plaquemine's community complex.
Yes, the cannery.
Yeah, up on the top, yeah.
Yeah, two babbitts.
Jim?
A couple of questions, Nancy. On the southeast side of John Adams, and there's some lots, are those, are there homes on those lots?
Um, yes.
And what is the situation with the armory right now? Does the master plan include a specific use for it in the future?
Yes, it would be used for operations and partly for fleet and partly for storage. It depends on when we get it, Commissioner. We are working actively with the National Guard right now to, they're interested in trying to do some sort of a transfer for that site. The background of that site is such that the building belongs to the National Guard. They have the authority to use our property. When they leave the site, the property goes back to the ownership of the city. And that's a great building. I mean, that's got, it's in good condition, it's got high ceilings, it's a fabulous operations building. So right now, the National Guard is in the process of developing a very large site down at Camp Whitaker Combe, and they're actually interested in trying to come to some conclusion on getting, you know, transferring the building back to us, so, or to us. So we're, John is, John Lewis is working on that. And we're not sure of the timing, and you never know about those things. So we, since there's so much uncertainty, we put it into Phase Four. But if that moved up into an early, if we got, if we acquired that sooner, we'd be able to do a lot of fleet work in that building, and that would help our fleet department a lot.
Another question. In the, in the site, original research on the operations center, were there other sites considered in town?
Yes.
What were some of those sites, and what dinged them out of consideration?
Well, we looked at, we looked at all the kind of large sites and, and properties that could be assembled. And we, the things that dinged them out were either the location being too far out, or the cost of acquisition, the zoning to some extent. Of course, we could potentially rezone the site, but then also looking at what, where are you, you know, where are you, and would you be welcome in that area? And not that, assuming that we remain welcome in the neighborhood we're already in, I think at least since we've already been there for a really long time, we can hopefully continue to operate as a good neighbor. But it was, it was predominantly size locate, size of the properties, location, that's really the main. And certainly, you wouldn't take a big church site in the middle of a neighborhood, that kind of a thing. And a park site, there really aren't that many good qualified sites for us.
Finally, the, the office building, how far along is the planning and design for that, or is it?
The only place we're at right now on it is through the master planning process. We're asking for it to be tall enough so that it can be at grade with the upper level, so it facilitates people mobility on the site.
As delineated in this Phase Four drawing, you have kind of like an arched bridge over the cliff onto the roof?
Yeah, yeah. And, and so that's the footprint. And then, because of the zoning and the height restrictions in the, this particular zone and the setbacks that we're also, that's the master planning process, we're going for some revised setbacks and this kind of thing. What we, the only thing that we are asking for at this time is to, is about height and having, allowing a certain height in the front, and then stepping it up higher as you go back in the building, so that you don't have that overpowering mass right up against the street. Step it back, and it can be a much, much more elegant and less intrusive architecture for the street.
Sure. Actually, I do have one last question. On this sheet description of phases, could you go down one of each of these phases and not estimate when they're going to start, but generally, what would be like a timeline of months for each phase?
Oh, I, I don't think I'm prepared to do that tonight. I have been looking, I have not scheduled out each one of these items.
Okay.
I'd be happy to bring that back, though, if you'd like, with the follow-up.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions? We'll see this multiple times.
Yes, you will.
Okay. Thank you. I'm very, very excited about that. Do you need a break?
Thank you.
Okay, how about till five after seven? We are in recess.
Thank you. We are now back in session, and if Michael will go on here. Now we're back in session. And the next thing on the agenda for discussion is the next iteration of the parking study, downtown parking study.
Madam President, members of the session, you have received the parking study. You also have a briefing here. Mike?
Briefing from Rick Williams, who is our parking consultant. And I know that you've had a lot of other communications, including a letter from Judge Meyer, who is the preceding judge for the court system.
Presiding judge.
Presiding judge, yeah. That's what my notes say, I just didn't say it right. So, anyhow, what I want to discuss with you this evening is to determine where we go with the implementation of this study. But I'll first present you, and I'll present you a couple of different alternatives for action, and both of those are kind of, well, I'll get that in a second. Maybe give you a couple of different visions of that, and then get whatever guidance you want on whichever path you want to go. It is important that you make some decision on how you want to handle downtown parking because I think that is going to define your downtown development. And it's going to run probably a specter of, or continuum somewhere between, is it, is downtown going to be a civic center with emphasis on employee and user parking? Or is it going to be more of a commercial center with emphasis on visitor parking, particularly in that confined core? Now, you have to go back, first of all, and just look at some of the things that we learned in the parking study. Let me just give you a quick synopsis of that. I won't go into detail, but I'd be glad to answer any question on that. That there are multiple users with different parking needs in downtown. That right now, our parking regulations downtown are confusing. I think there's 11 different regulations around downtown parking, depending where you park. There are a number of issues associated with downtown parking, but we have a good foundation in which the bill from. We also learned what the average stay is for most visitors. We know what the current turnover rate is, and we know what the utilization of parking is in the downtown district, in the core, and on the bluff as well. The good news in that is that we don't necessarily have a parking supply problem, we have a parking utilization problem. And part of that is, too, that a lot of the supply is in private ownership, so how do you look at this as an entire issue? So then you get down to the, the actions that you want to take. And again, you have to remember where we've come from. You did a, asked that we put together a task force, we sent invitations out to a number of different parties for them to send whoever they chose to. And we had a committee which met, I think, on eight different occasions, talking about this, went on for several months. And we get down to the end, and we find that maybe not all parties that we needed at the table sent the right representatives. And we'd like to have a new discussion of that. So you have one of two options, and I've kind of laid out some timeframes. And those could change a little bit, and you could shift some of those around depending on which option you choose here this evening. The first alternative would provide a new review with different stakeholders. And again, you kind of see there, visiting with the various stakeholders, and that would involve the judges and attorneys, it would involve law enforcement agencies, it would involve downtown business owners, employees, private lot owners and operators, McLaughlin Neighborhood, and residents on the Hilltop, business owners and employees of the Hilltop, Main Street Board, and I think, and eventually the County Commission. Now, you'll do that under any scenario here. It's really about how you go about doing this. With this one, again, you would be soliciting these folks' input and looking for modification in the recommendations, kind of trying to address those needs. The second alternative would provide discussions with the same groups to inform them of the recommendations, and then figure out how you might be able to address their issues within the recommendations that's been provided to you. Now, those may seem like I'm splitting hairs there, but I think the conversation you're going to get based on what we've received is going to take you in an entirely different path versus what the committee is recommending to you today for action. But again, we're open to that. It's one of those issues, again, that, given the different users in downtown, how we go about it, there's, there's going to be some different costs associated with it. Needless to say, there'll probably be some gnashing of teeth in whatever those recommendations are. But it's one of those issues that, depending on where we want to go, and I think you, the first question you have to ask yourself is what is your vision of the future of downtown? Because, again, how you determine this issue is going to determine a lot how downtown develops. So we're open to do anything. Again, we ask you not to send us out to fact the lions unless you're going to send us with a sword, so.
I think that, and I, I'm, I would be, I would love to go out with you because I think to shop this is, is really a key piece of the work that we have for the next couple of years. And I don't, I think the key question that you asked us is, is that, do we accept the values that the parking study has put forward as the value? So do we want a vibrant downtown that has turnover parking? And so, in my mind, it's option number two, that we're shopping this and certainly receiving input, and we'll talk about modifying recommendations as we hear them, and certainly some creative collaborations could occur, like with the courthouse, as we hone down on specific recommendations that affects specific stakeholders. But is this correct? We have not shopped this with the County Commission, who, who is 50% partner on the study, right?
Well, we, we gave them a midterm report, we have not given them a finished report.
Right, the final, so, so in, in shopping this, I, I think that, you know, that ball will pick up a lot of litter along the way, and then to come back together and revise the recommendation... And then to come back together and revise the recommendations and then look at a, I mean, I really like the format that you've laid out here. It helps me to see how that plan can, can be implemented. But I think that's really important to, to shop that around. So that the, and I think that was part of the recommendations anyway.
Yes.
These were recommendations, but then as we, we wanted to tweak each one and each one has, you know, various components.
But the recommendations too were based on a set of guiding principles.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I said.
And again, those principles kind of, is how you arrived at the recommendations.
Right.
As you remember, Mr. Williams indicated, he put the committee first in parking handcuffs. So they didn't really talk about the problems or the solutions. It's first he talked about what the committee wanted for downtown and what were the guiding principles. And from that, they developed the recommendations.
What are you saying though? What, what is it you're saying? I, I don't hear, I don't hear anything. Are you pushing back on what I said? I'm not sure what you're saying.
No, not exactly, but again, if you begin to tweak the recommendations, you have to go back first and begin to look at the principles.
The guiding principles will be part of the shopping. I mean, that's what you lead with, absolutely. And then the recommendations and then, I mean, I don't think that there's always just one way to do a recommend, to, to implement a recommendation. There might be the third way. And so I think that, that the value of accepting input, always leading with the, the values. And if, I mean, I, I think the most important, the decision that we make is, is that, are we behind having a vibrant downtown with the, with the kind of turnover that the guiding principles have recommended? So I think if we affirm that, then we have the ability to, to lead with that in, as, as we present the recommendations to the various stakeholder groups. And we have to, we have to be able to hear them. If we don't hear them here, we'll hear them here. And I'd prefer to hear them up front. Leading with those, I mean, they've not had a presentation. So the feed, only feedback that those groups have gotten either is through the rumor mill or through perhaps an individual that has represented those groups that may not have presented it in the way that we would.
There is a, there is a third alternative which may be the best because this is a large volume of work that we have spent considerable time doing. And I guess I'm confused about what shopping is around means, but you could employ Mr. Williams for another round, insist that those parties send the appropriate representatives and we go back through this whole study again.
Oh no, I think it's time to go to the groups. I mean, I think we have to present the study. We, we've just not done that. I think it's time to present the study, don't you?
So who's, who would be presenting it? You, you or I or staff or?
Oh, it would definitely be a team.
Okay.
I mean, I would be, I'd love to go on some of those because I've certainly been fielding plenty of complaints. But certainly, maybe a couple of people that sat on the task force. But we, we need to present the study, so.
And you could, I mean, we could add to the contract and have Mr. Williams be part of that presentation.
I don't know that we need him to do that because he's given it to us. I mean, so it seems to me that he gave the presentation to us, so now it's incumbent upon us to accept it and it, and own it and then begin to implement the pieces of it. So, Daphne?
May I ask, Betty, Betty Mum was on the task force, can you come up and tell?
I was not on the task force.
You weren't? Oh, I thought you were, I'm sorry.
Amber was.
But she's not here. Anybody here on the task force?
What's the question?
Well, my question is, is what, how do they, how would they see it?
How would they see what?
The presentation, if they should re-employ, if, if we could do a good enough job or the task force itself could do a good enough job presenting it, or do we need Rick?
Well, see, I think the task force finished their work too and, and put it in a document and then, you know, just like any study, gave it to us and then now it's, it's, it's,
Our puppy now.
It's our puppy, yeah.
Okay.
And we need to pet our puppy.
It's our dog and pony show.
It is, I think. And so I think it's just.
Yeah, that's fine. I just was asking.
I don't know that there's that many groups that we have to, to really shop it to, but it's just like, I mean, it's like any plan that we roll out. I think we need to, we have to convince and convince those stakeholder groups and help them understand how, and not, not be threatened by it, but help understand how, catch the vision that we have for the downtown, if that's the vision. So, Jim?
As far as the vision for downtown, I want to bring some other strands that may already be in here, I just don't want to make, I just want to make sure they don't get left out. I'm all on board with the vision of having, you know, the parking be strategized so there's turnover, you know, for, for street level retail in downtown.
Like their permissions, yeah.
But what I really want to make sure that is part of this moving forward is based on Main Street and based on the retreat for the Urban Renewal Commission. Because when I saw us coming out of the Urban Renewal Retreat with was having Mr. Leland, you know, do that next refinement of more detailed planning for downtown in the north end of Main Street with a focus on residential. Because residential development downtown is going to put the people on the street, you know, to have restaurants and stores, et cetera, in the downtown area. And that, that aspect of what I think we may be envision, envisioning, at least in part moving into the future, will really, really, I think, play into the whole issue of parking as far as what kind of additional demands that will create in the future as, you know, we do have residential development. Whether that means, for example, having Mr. Williams or Mr. Leland on board to talk about how we might, you know, amend our parking code to allow for, you know, residential development, transit-based residential development with less parking or no parking. You know, I'm not going to speculate on that, but I, I just, I'm hoping that, that as we move forward on that vision of what we will want downtown to be, will include that potential and desire to have more residential development in downtown in the north end of Main Street.
That's not necessarily inconsistent with the.
No, that was discussed by. I need to say, residential parking brings a new pressure to downtown parking.
Rock, try.
Can you be more specific on stakeholders who we're talking about?
I think the ones that come to mind are, first of all, the, the court system and that is your judges and your attorneys, and I think you've heard.
Some of these stakeholder groups can be combined.
Oh, sure, sure. Any of these can, whatever order. I think your law enforcement agencies and you've, you've heard issues regarding police parking downtown. I think your downtown business owners and of course the employees, and they may or may not see eyeball to eyeball on the same, the issue the same. Your private lot owners and operators, the bordering neighborhood, which is McLaughlin Neighborhood and those folks on top of the hilltop, which also will involve the business owners on the hilltop as well. I think you want to involve your Main Street Board and the county commission as well. I think I've kind of captured everyone, but maybe I left someone out.
So am I right in saying that all those various stakeholders were involved in this process, but some may have changed their viewpoint because they were, had representatives that weren't necessarily representing the group that they were representing? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I think what has happened is that, that anxiety has occurred.
Maybe the reality of what is coming to bear.
Okay.
And not all of those, I don't know if we had any business owners from the hilltop on the committee. I don't recall anyone that might have represented that group. The county commission did not send a county commissioner to the committee. And again, you were represented by a city commissioner as well as all your critical staff at, at that issue.
Well, the county commission was only three at the time anyway.
Yeah.
So, it's changed.
Including the police chief, I assume?
No, not, not at that time.
Anyone from the police department?
Not from our police department, no. We did have a county sheriff there.
That's, that's a concern.
Well, we may indeed wish to make a presentation to, to the city staff.
Yep.
Who, and that may be a stakeholder group that should be.
Well, we've been, I think we've been, Mike and I have had several conversations on this issue as we've gone through this study, so.
Well, I'm all for going forward. I think the longer that the parking study festers.
Yes.
The greater the anxiety.
Yes.
So I, I would really like to get on to the review and what I call shopping, that's just a PR term.
I just, okay, next step, all I need to know is really, we can lay out the meetings, which as you see will be one of the first things on this list that we'll be doing after this work session. We'll also be bringing forth action in regards to a parking committee, so.
A permanent downtown parking committee?
Yeah, yeah. Which will probably be an offshoot of what the, the group that you've had there, again, be looking for, again, wide representation as well as those folks who may be interested in serving there. So I just need to know what your availability is or your desire to be involved in these discussions because this will be time consuming.
I'd like to, to be involved in certainly some of them.
Probably need a couple of you to sit through that or, unless you want a, a different approach through some type of total board meeting with these different groups, how you want to do that. I just need your guidance on, as we set this up.
I, I think, I think that a small group can do it. I mean, if there's a, if there's a key person from the task force that should be there, but you know, we're, I think what we're doing now is, I mean, if I were going, I would be representing all of us and talking about where we are in the process. I mean, it's really a process thing. And then laying out the recommendations and, you know, asking for, for feedback and, you know, issues that we need to work on. So it's going to be an accumulation of information, I think, that you'll bring back then as a report to us and talk about the areas in which you may need modification or more work or more meetings or, I think it'll become clear to us as we meet with those groups what will need to happen.
Larry, you're funny on this one tonight.
Well, it's, I, I mean, we've, we've spent four months doing this.
I know, we're going to go, we want to, I want to go forward with this.
I think I know what the issues that are going to come forward is. The question you're still going to get down to is how do you deal with these issues? And I think that's what you're going to hear.
Exactly.
Well, we got to hear the issues first.
I can outline those right now to you, but I think you need to hear those firsthand.
But you don't, but what we don't know are the implementation pieces. There, I mean, we haven't listened in that, I mean, there may be a different, there, we have the recommendations, but we don't have the implementation, implementation specifics. And there may be different implementation specifics than we've thought of. And I think that that's always the benefit of going out to groups is you.
Yeah, who knows? Somebody might say, oh, they're going to buy a van or a shuttle and shuttle all their employees and, you know, they're happy to do this and you just don't know.
And we haven't talked to the county yet about their specific participation.
Or our own police department.
Yeah. I, I think it'll be an interesting process.
We can do it.
Well, actually, I have heard from our own police department.
Well, I know, but there was no representative on the task force or on this group. That's, that's unbelievable.
No, it's not. And, and again, I think we have resolved the issue for our police department and the fact that we have leased parking spaces in a private lot downtown, and I would encourage any other law enforcement agents to do that. Again, because the thing we're trying to create there, based on what the committee gave, is removing employee parking from the street. And again, there's parking resource, it's a question of where that's utilized.
Yeah.
Because certainly one of the.
So we've, we've, we've addressed the concerns that, that we have. Now, if we need to lease more spaces, we can do that because that was an issue for the police department we've addressed there.
I, I think that's a huge issue going forward since 80% of vacancies are in the private lots. I mean, that is a huge, huge piece going forward that can do a great deal to ease the, the parking situation. I think you're not hearing any negatives about going forward, so.
No, we need to start working on this solution.
So, report back to us in, looks like August or early September or something, is that kind of timeline? Looks like here. Adopt, modify, reject.
No, we will, the, the, the next step there is begin these meetings with various stakeholders, which we will begin now and through July.
Oh, okay. Review stakeholders' concerns, I was looking at. Okay.
Because again, that's the groups you want to hear from before we come up with any, and you'll see that we're doing basically some basic steps that we would do one way or the other, but all the major work in regards to addressing downtown parking is waiting until after that. Because I think, I think you're going to have some issues to wrestle with.
Yeah, well, look forward to it because it's a change and it's, 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 it's something we need to do for a long time, so. Any other issues, concerns?
No.
All righty then.
We'll bring them back to you.
Okay, next. City commission procedures.
I just want to walk through, this came up at our last meeting and I just want to touch on a few things with you. Again, it's not to point fingers or to dredge up any past debates, kind of difficult to talk about all this without pointing out some things, but I'll, I'll try to do this within a broader framework. And hopefully provide some guidelines or protocols for procedures and behavior that you may want to think about. Again, I don't think you need to write anything, I've seen councils go through that, they've spent a lot of money and done that, but under pressure. Well, they've come up with procedures on how to do things, but those usually break down under pressure, really as a matter of just kind of agreeing and then everyone kind of having the discipline to carry that out. I do think this is very important that you consider doing that because I think it speaks to the credibility of each and every commissioner. I think it speaks to the credibility of the city commission as a whole, its staff and this organization. And I think this city has suffered somewhat from dysfunctional relationships between the commission, not this particular one, but commission and staff. And I think that, I can tell you, that's a road to nowhere for most cities. And everyone, I believe, both the commission and staff is working hard. And that means that we're, we don't make some mistakes and maybe have some miscommunications, but I don't think it's some of the things as it's been portrayed to be. So what are some of those recommendations that I would forward to? And I, again, I kind of lay these out as a discussion item as opposed to me just reading a list per se. But I think the first thing becomes understanding what are the roles and responsibilities that we play? What are the roles of the city commissioner? What are the roles of, of city staff? And already, we've kind of seen where we want to, I think, again, it really depends on the hours that you want to work is how you want to go about doing that. And let me take it first from just the issue of information. You're welcome to review any information, you're welcome to request any information, but the question I have to ask you is, is how much of that do you want? And you, we can go back to the, to the cove issue and look at it. I mean, you have probably one of the best staffs that you can hire working on this issue. You have an attorney like Steve Janik who's probably the best in the business that are reviewing documents and trying to come up with those answers. Do you really want to review everything that goes in to the development agreements? If the issue becomes, because from our perspective, what we're doing from a staff is trying to work through those issues as well. If you don't want to do the project, I can tell you where you can pull the plug and what the Achilles' heels of it are that we're working to resolve. But as those things come up, we're trying to find solutions for them. If you, and it, and that's been the mission so far because that's basically what the Urban Renewal Commission has said and that's what the city commission said as they wanted to move forward. And you remember how we got started in all this, is we talked about, we wanted economic development as goal, and that goes back four or five years ago. And we've hit that on the hilltop, we've hit it at the hospital, there's development downtown, and we've been working on the coves and rivers. If we don't want to do the cove and rivers, I can tell you what to do. You don't have to go through and find a gotcha in there. We don't have to move the goalpost every time we meet that, right now it's the high watermark or it's, it's the shading on the fish or whatever the issue are. You know, there are things in there where if we want to pull the plug, there's ways out of it. But that's not what, at least the direction staff has. Staff's direction so far from the majority has been, we want to make this happen. So somehow I think we need to kind of figure that out. I will say, if we're going to have a lot of detail that we, we need to bring forth our meeting, we need to really think about our meeting schedule. And I would recommend to you that maybe we have one council meeting a month, one work session, and maybe one land use session that's set up to handle those things. Because one of the things we're bogging down in right now is just preparation for meetings. And it's very difficult to get ready, to go through and think about how things are going to stay without making some mistakes in doing that. Another, another issue in that, and I've given you. Another issue in that, and I've given you some stuff this evening that you need to review and tell me if you really want that on your next agenda. You brought the issue up regarding code enforcement, and I would encourage you to look through there. I think that raises some interesting policy questions because again, the mission that staff has is the things that were out there, particularly in code enforcement, and this goes for many things, are the things that we have approved as a city. And so, the question becomes, do we enforce them or do we not enforce them? And you can't do it for this person or that person. You have to do it for all parties. So, the question is, if we're not going to do it in this case, then the message is we're not going to be enforcing those things and we just need to know that. Again, I'm not trying to make life tough on any one citizen. I just need to know what are the marching orders? And right now, we're following a whole book of codes that the commission, not this one in particular, but commissions over time, have approved and put on the books. And if someone violates those, that's an issue. And so, again, I'd encourage you to read through that. Tell me again if you really want that and we'll be glad to discuss that. And working with the city manager, again, I've had this conversation before, and I'm, I think if you've worked with a lot of city managers, you'd find I'm pretty laid back in that regard. If you have a question of staff, I would say go ahead and direct that to the staff member. No need for me to come through and me get an answer, send it back to you, and things of that nature. What I do ask is that you ask the same question of me because I may have a lot more information from other departments than what one staff member understands. Or he may not have the conversation with another department. And so, I can pass some of that up to you. And it's my job to make sure too that you have all that stuff. I also have to make sure the information is correct. I mean, we did go through a couple of weeks ago this issue in spring. I think we got a lot of folks alarmed, come to find out that was kind of a non-issue. I know that takes time. We want to move fast. One of my experiences in Baytown, and we had a lot of emergency situations that came up that involved pipeline ruptures. And you had two big issues that came up in all those and it kind of points out these things to make sure your information is correct. You had to find out what the substance was, which was not always easy, and you've had to find out whose pipeline it was. Because underneath that city, it looked like a freeway system in Portland ran underneath it. And of course, putting out bad information, not only did it alarm folks, but there was a big liability for the city in doing so. And sometimes that would take hours to get done. In the meantime, the press was killing us in those situations by reports coming out. And what you spent half time doing, in fact, you had one person that was just in control of rumor control because it was rampant. So, we have to make sure that the information is correct before we send it out. And again, you might want to direct those things back to my office because again, it will be one of those things where, in particular in this case, where we went through several different, a couple of different departments and staff to really kind of figure out what had taken place in that situation. Next issue is I would encourage you to be prepared for city commission meetings. And that's more than just reading the packet. And I think too, it's more than just coming to the commission and asking questions. I think it's visiting with folks, really getting familiar with what those issues are. Some cases, it's site visits. If there's things you need in terms of information, we need to know that. If there's questions you really think need to be resolved, it really is helpful to know that. To walk into a meeting and get asked a question, really not in the best situation to respond. In past, I've really kind of fought off, I usually know something about most of the issues, but I don't really fail right now. I'm comfortable with providing information that well because I think we're in a time where there's a lot of distrust. And if I don't have it stated correctly, I know it's going to be a gotcha and I don't want to go there. So, and the same thing with Mr. Herman's situation. I was pretty familiar with that. I really didn't want to comment until I'd gone back and checked all my information on it before we had to have this discussion. I don't think anyone likes surprises. I know the commission doesn't. Same way goes for staff. And again, we have to operate as a team and we shouldn't be trying to make anyone look bad. We look bad enough most of the time just dealing with the issues we have to because they're complex. And if there was a right answer, we'd find in the book somewhere. Most time, we're all kind of trying to do the best job we can. I think we need to respect the agenda. I do know things come up. I do think, know things change. We're trying to be mindful of that. We're trying to get better. I think some of the stuff Ms. Adams put in place should help with that. But again, if there's things we want on the agenda, we need to make sure that those get appropriately placed there. I would ask you too, when you come to the commission meeting, to be prepared to make decisions. That doesn't mean that you have to every time because there's going to be some times where you're just uncomfortable with the information you have perhaps to make a decision. But to not make a decision because the homework's not done or just because, you know, you just don't want to make a decision only increases the workload for the next meeting. Because not only do you have the work coming next time, we've got to carry that back and that means more work. And it's hard. If I was setting your shoes, I wouldn't want that all the time too because I'm scratching my head, what do I do? And a lot of times, you don't know. And you're going to have to make the decision based on, best decision you can on the information in front of you at the time. And as we go through time, you know, and I look back over most of the decisions I've had to make, if I would have had to make that decision three or four months down the road, I probably could have made a better decision. But you don't have that option, so. And the one thing, I mean, a lot of what this business is driven by the groups that come before you. But you have a whole nother section of the population out there who expect things to run appropriately. You never hear from them. And as long as they do, you never hear from them. And it's important that we make sure that those things get done. And again, delays create issues in us being able to perform those. I think too, when you look at issues, you have to kind of decide, is it something we're going to take up? Is it on the work plan that we've set for the year? If not, are we going to take something else off the work plan if we're going to add a big item to it? And again, that's going to have to be somewhat flexible because things come up. Is it a problem that needs action, I think? You know, I think one of the things we're all in this business, you know, we see every issue and as I've always said, we'll tackle every issue before it's time. And the question is, does it really need an answer? Is what we're talking about doing, does it really make the situation any better? And so, we need to do that. I think too, if it's an issue we want to go down, I think it's something that the whole commission needs to want to undertake. It's not just because one commissioner is interested in it. If not, for long, the workload is overwhelming and you're working on a lot of issues that when you bring it back to the commission, they're not going to go anywhere anyhow. So, is it really something that the full board is wanting to do? I think when you send us off to do something too, maybe we've had a couple of examples that this evening, what are the parameters for action? You know, if you have something specific in mind that you want to see taken, probably we need to know that upfront because it won't do us any good to go out and involve folks, come up with stuff if you already knew the path that you want to go down. And I'm, and you know, we all do that from time to time. I know staff, I do that with staff sometimes and they get a little upset with me that I had a particular thing I was expecting and I should have been clearer in the communication and doing it, and I'd ask that of the commission as well. I think too, you have to determine the level of review and the timeframes for the evaluation of action. It doesn't, I think, do us much good to try, once, to have a debate and have a vote that takes us on a path. And then each meeting, you know, whoever the minority voice is, is trying to kill that issue. I think once you make a decision, it's time to come together as a group and move forward. Set up regular times of evaluation. And that doesn't mean that you shouldn't try to change the mindset perhaps of your fellow commissioners, but you do that through time. You don't do it every meeting. Or work, an interest group over here to work against what the commission has just decided on. Because again, you'll all be in those different roles from time to time. And I don't know if it makes any of you look good if you're working against the group. Doesn't mean you have to agree with the group. But the group has made the decision. And again, it's funny in this business, the one thing I've seen, I've seen the worst of decisions when people pull together and communities pull together be the best results. I've likewise seen the best of decisions in which folks were pulling at the edges of it be the worst of results. So, it's really a question, you can take a bad idea if you pull together and you can really make something good and come out of it, so.
I don't know if you want any comment at this point.
Sure, anytime.
But you know, on our, when we interview for our advisory committees, often we ask, how do you, how do you work within a group? And if you disagree with an issue, then how do you work with the rest of your team? And it's a factor on getting appointed to a commission. So, in other words, if the majority goes, then work with the majority because it won't serve that commission any good to have everybody working in different directions.
The other thing too, I think where the commission falls in, this is that leadership component of the commission, is once you make a decision, is I think as a commission, you have to lead on that decision. You can't just leave staff out there to lead on the issue. We can go do the day-to-day stuff on it. We can move it forward. But it really is a decision the commission's made and the commission as a group, you stand up and say, this is our decision. That's hard to do sometimes, particularly when, because as I always said, the city commission doesn't write the news, you make the news. So, it's, the minute you make a decision, you can almost guarantee 50% of the population may disagree with you. It's really a question of how good the result comes out, whether they're going to think in the end. It's amazing, if you have one of those things where the community is split down the middle, if you move it forward and it ends up good, it'll be hard to find those folks who are against it. It's always amazing to me. But you know, you'll, and that's probably an overstatement, but I've seen a lot of folks who were naysayers to certain issues that once those were done, come in and say, yeah, you know. And I've had others where it's been hard to find some of the most critical folks of that. Let me talk just a little bit about commission debate. I think if you're going to be a well-functioning commission, it has to be based on mutual respect. Doesn't mean you have to agree with one another or even have to agree with staff, but I think that has to be based on respect. And I think some of the innuendo we've had, some of the statements I've heard that come through the community, I don't think that helps the situation of trying to have a relationship where we can be as open as we need to in debating these crucial issues. I don't think too, that we can be critical of individual staff members. There were a couple of times that came up at the last city commission meeting where actually names were mentioned. I don't think that's appropriate at the council. If you have an issue with this come up that you think needs looking into, refer that to me and I will look into that issue. If it involves me, then I would indicate that you should then indicate to the mayor, you need an executive session to talk about city manager performance. I think too, if we're looking at issues, you need to ask staff, myself in particular, to gather all the facts so the commissioners have an equal background or information in which to debate an issue. Won't do you any good if one of you has a certain set of facts and somebody else has a different set of facts to have a debate. I think too, on each issue, it's a question of first of all, defining what the problem is that we're addressing. I think all of you have to clarify your positions. I know Commissioner West at the last meeting had to ask why a negative vote normally in a debate. Usually find out where people stand. And if you don't know, that's probably not good. Not so much just for yourself, but I guarantee you the public watching is going to, what brought that about? So, you probably need to clarify where you stand on position. Plus, it helps everyone understand. Yeah, and the issue and what the opinions are.
Yeah, I wasn't chair of that committee, but I will usually ask you, if you haven't declared and you voted opposite your discussion or something, I will usually ask you to declare.
I would prefer not to be asked after I gave my answer prior to being asked also.
Yeah, if you gave it.
Sure, yeah.
I did.
That's true. And that goes back to that first item I mentioned. I think too, you have to, when you begin to take up an issue, it's good to let us know what information you're going to need to discuss this, what information you're going to need to decide that issue. And again, do we all have a common base of information which to work from? I think we do need to ask, again, as I mentioned, does the problem need addressing and what we're talking about, does it make the situation any better? If it doesn't, perhaps we either need to go in a different direction or maybe it doesn't require action at the present time. I think we need to develop a plan of action and whether it can be funded and whether we have the resources to allocate to that issue. And that's a tough debate. A lot of times, I mean, we all have a lot of wants, but, and the city has lots of needs, but we only have a finite amount of resources and I think we need to understand that. I think too, we need to understand what the obstacles faced in addressing an issue are. It's one thing to want quick action, but some of these items, they have a rocky road before they get to the end. And when staff goes out to try to implement them, it may take a while and we can kind of explain what we're running into. Comes down to in the end, once we kind of agree to a course of action, we probably need to agree to an implementation strategy as well. That's a quick list. I mean, you can, this stuff is really the topic of a major discussion. As I said the other evening, I think we can do better. I think we're off on a pretty good foot. The one thing I do like about the commission, I think the demeanor as well. I think some of the discussion has led to some, I think some statements that probably I think all of us, if we went back, would probably not feel so good that we made those because I don't think it helps the commission as a whole. I don't think it helps the city. I think we have to do a better job of working with each other on that. But that's my opinion on it.
I think it's been very clear to me that when, you know, I ran through this decision, I joined a team, as each of you did. And as a team, we have to figure out how to work together. I think Larry's addressing some of those things. And so, each time we turn over, we have to sort of reevaluate our working togetherness and how we do the problem solving that we do. But the key element in all of that is our city manager. He's the hands of the organization. And if, and everything we do really revolves around the relationship that we build together. And I think another thing that I would say that, I mean, we all do constituent work. Our citizens call and complain. I probably get more, more just because I've been around longer. And the first line, when a citizen calls, it's, thank you very much for calling. I'll look into that and get back to you. The next call is the city manager. You know, Larry, I've had this call, you know, what do you know about it? Can you do research for me or let me know so I can get back to the citizen? And that, I think, is just, it's certainly worked in the seven years that I've had here. Because the citizen, or anyone who calls us sees one side. I only see one side of an issue until I've learned from staff that it actually, quite a few things that I didn't know about. So, that's, I think, the importance of the teams, that we all bring different perspectives. But the key again is our relationship with our city managers. And if he's not doing our job, doing the job, then together, that's where we have a little conversation with him about that. But the other thing that you talked about Larry was, you know, how much information we need to make a good decision. And that's, I wrestle with that since the beginning. And when we had, we used to have our work session right two days before a city commission meeting. And the value of that was that that's the night when you could say, well, Rocky could say, I don't have a map here and I can't read it. And then staff would have two days to get that. Or, you know, Jim, you could say, I really need to see a report. How many of you need to see that too? And so, we had that opportunity. The work session now that we scheduled doesn't relate so much. So, it's, so that piece is kind of missing. So, I guess it's incumbent upon us, you know, to use the phone. Monday's probably the earliest we'll get to it because Friday, the packet often comes late. So, you know, to call and ask for things that are missing so that it isn't the day of the meeting. And I think that's what's been happening lately. There's an awful lot of flurry of activity the day of the meeting and it's very difficult. But one thing that is, that makes us all look bad is when we bring things forward at a meeting and we're expecting a response, it makes us, it makes staff look unprepared because they are. And so, that's why we, you know, future agenda items is a place to put things that belong at another time because again, we really want the best information, at least I do, in making a decision. So, I want staff to have time to research it before they bring it to us. So, the no surprises thing, I think, rubs both ways. I mean, the first thing that I have told every CEO I've worked with is that, I don't want to read it up in the newspaper first. I want you to tell us. So, that's the kind of communication that I expect from our city manager. Otherwise, I think that that respect that we have for each other is one of the keys to building the team as we work together. Other comments on working relationship? I mean, it'll be evolutionary as we work together over the next two years.
It'll never be perfect. I mean, things break down from time to time with this.
Right. And I'm glad you said that, but I think establishing that level of trust so that we can understand that, you know, understand the thinking that we have and the issues on the table. And that's the value of, again, the strategy session that we have at the beginning of January, that, you know, the issues are on the table and then we develop a work plan and that is the direction that we're in.
A lot of that is solved by really being very clear on where you stand on issues and debating those to one another. And also how you work together once a decision is made. If you're holding your punches so folks don't really know where you're at and once you make a decision, you're still fighting among yourself. you make a decision, you're still fighting among yourself and while you're trying to implement it, it'll lead to all these other things breaking down, so that's.
Right. Yeah, the public wants to see us, I think, disagree with that being disagreeable. And, yeah, I think that that's, that's very key because what I've learned over my many years in politics is that whatever any of us do is disagreeable or that is even something outside the meeting, you know, that's illegal or immoral or distasteful, reflects on all of us. The public can't necessarily distinguish between us. It's that city council just is out of control. I mean, that, and it's often just one individual. So I think the, the decorum and the, the quality of the debate, all of that reflect on how we work together as a team. And I think the community really wants us to be, you know, the best that we can be.
I have one more. And you know, people do respect a no vote and they, they don't care if it's yes or no, they just need to know. It's, and it really helps me too, or, you know, to know where people stand, so.
Well, I.
It just, you know, if you.
Yeah, people come before you many times and there'll be a lot of emotion around an issue. I don't think there, there, you don't see too often that folks will hold their anger because you made a decision they just, that they disagree with.
Yeah.
Where they really get mad is when there's no decision and they're left in the number.
Right. And, and they're guessing.
Yep.
No comments? Okay?
Cemetery.
Cemetery. Is that a dead issue?
I was waiting for the first joke, so you got that prize for that one.
Did it talk to us about our permanent residents?
Uh huh.
Oh.
They don't, they don't count in our population.
Well, they do in Chicago. Vote early, vote often.
You vote here for some time. I better start speaking before this gets worse. I just think one of them, if anybody wants.
We could go underground.
You got a whole list of these. I'm going to write these down. I'd like to talk to you about a proposal to increase our cemetery fees. We'd like to, we'd like to implement this change on July 1st just because it's the beginning of the fiscal year and it kind of makes sense, but before we do that, I wanted to bring this forward to you and, and make sure that you were okay with it, didn't have any major concerns or if you had any other additional feedback. I don't, I don't believe, as I understand it, that this is, that a commission approval is required for a price increase. This is just one of our operating prices, but we don't change prices at our cemetery very often. I'd certainly like your support in, in doing that, knowing that you're comfortable with that, so.
We haven't done it after since 2003.
Actually, it's been about eight years, I think.
I think it was a while, yeah.
No, it was during my time.
Okay.
So it must be 2003.
Okay. It's, it's been a number of years. We haven't, we haven't, we haven't increased fees for quite a while. We, let's see, the, the sheet that I just gave you gives you basically what we're proposing is, is an across-the-board increase of the majority of our fees by 50%. And that may sound like a, a pretty, a pretty quick jump, however, got a couple of comments I want to make on that. We, first of all, we haven't raised the fees in, in several years at least, and so we're probably, we're probably behind in doing that. We, we, we've been working under a little bit of a misconception that, that not raising fees increases sales. And some recent information that we have through some professional associations of cemetery operators, Mr. Potter, Larry Potter, our Parks and Cemetery Manager, has actually done a really good job of, of getting more involved in understanding cemetery management. It's one thing to manage it, manage the grounds and, and just simply take people's money and, and do the things we do. It's another thing to do that on a level of professionalism. And to Larry's credit, he's, he's come up with, with a lot of these recommendations and has gotten himself involved in the, the professional associations, has gone to the national conference the last couple of years, has brought back invaluable information and has realized some things that we've been doing. Probably, we've been sort of working a little bit in a vacuum and we should, we should look at some different things. So this might be one of a few things that we're going to be bringing forward and talking about in terms of how we operate our cemetery. One, just for the value of what it is as, as an important part of our community. And two, we'd like to, as much as possible, increase our revenue stream and potentially decrease the expenditures, although I can't say that that's exactly going to happen, but at least bring the gap of subsidy down and bring those two things closer together. And that's a big part of what this does. It, it does increase our revenues significantly. The justification for making this increase is that in, in previous times, the cemetery, Mountain View Cemetery was operated under the premise, it was maintained at more of a, what we would consider to be a rural cemetery. And that means that you really don't manicure the cemetery, it's, it's more in a natural state. That's not the level of maintenance that we're providing. We're providing a, a, a nice facility. It's, it's, it is very green, it's irrigated, it's mowed, it's very well-kept actually, considered, all things considered with, when you, and you know well, what our staffing situation is in our Parks and Cemetery Department. Our staff do a really nice job. So it is a, it is a nice facility. It is not maintained at a rural level, but it has typically been priced at a rural level, at a lower maintenance level. And so we haven't caught up with that. And frankly, in comparing to some of the, the other cemeteries, both private and public around the region, some of the, the research that Mr. Potter has done, we realize that our cemetery is, is nice and, and it is comparable or it's above standard. And again, we've held those prices down thinking, well, this is not that type of cemetery. Well, it is. It's, it's a nice facility. So we, we would like to start this process of, of bringing those, those fees to that level. Again, a 50% increase seems like a rather dramatic jump, but even with the 50% increase, and this is kind of an informal survey, we are still probably, our pricing is still probably about 50% lower than a lot of the cemeteries that you look at, even with the increased prices there. So again, still very affordable. And you'll notice too, that we have, we have a number of options. So, you know, everything from full burials to crypts, but we have, we have more affordable options for people. So it isn't that we're trying to, you know, take advantage of people in, in the situation that they're in when they walk into the office at the cemetery. You know, they're in a, they're in a difficult situation and we recognize that, so we're not trying to take advantage of people, we're being cognizant of that. What we do have is if people can't afford, you know, some of the higher-end burial plots or what have you, and, and actually a trend in the industry right now because of population and, you know, overpopulation and, and available land, especially in, in urban areas, is a lot of people are going towards cremation burials and those just take up very small spaces. Those are extremely affordable. You can buy a cremation plot for $150 even at our increased fee. So, and we feel like there are very affordable options for people. If we, if we implement these fee increases based on our revenue projections over the year, our budget that is, our, our proposed '09, '10 budget that you'll be presented with at your next commission meeting, does not reflect these fee increases. This is more of kind of a recent action that we've taken well after the budget process was put into place. So the, the fees, revenues that we have in place for the cemetery do not reflect this. And what I can tell you is, if we stay at the same projected rate of sales, we can expect to increase our revenues over what we've proposed by about $125,000. And that's significant in that our, our total cemetery revenues projected for next year are about $250,000. So we're increasing them by 50%. We, we have a total, a total expenditure of, where did I write that information down? Our total expenditures are 400, roughly $485,000. So this brings our, this brings our subsidy down from $235,000 to about $110,000. So the gap between expenditures and revenues is, is reduced to, closer to $100,000, which is, which is again, I think, a pretty, pretty positive step for that. So again, with that, this is what we are planning to do. I'd certainly like to know if the commission have any objections, questions, concerns, or if you're generally supportive of that.
Scott, I just wanted to clarify, this increase, are you, are you asking us to add it into the, the upcoming budget?
Um, what's that? To add it into the budget, yeah. Not necessarily, we can.
Would it help you?
Uh, I don't know. Mr. Wimmer, unfortunately, in here, he'd probably, we could, we could do, we could talk to, to Mr. Wimmer about whether or not it would make sense to add this as a change in, in the adopted budget. I don't want to, I don't want to bog that process down.
Probably we'll figure it out before next week, so we'll have to do that.
We can do a sup, probably easier is a supplemental budget down the road for actually, usually, yeah, some increased revenue. So we'll make sure that we account for the increased revenue, I guess, if that answers your question.
Other questions or comments on?
I definitely think that, I mean, if, if what you're saying is accurate, which I believe it is, it seems almost every case that we increase fees, we're still under, under everyone else. And so, and knowing the, the way that the cemetery looks, it is pretty amazing what we do with that piece of property. So I, I definitely think that this is something we should definitely consider.
And we, we try to be sensitive with our charges and I don't mind being actually below others. I think that's also reflective a little bit of our community, but as a practical business model from time to time, they've, they've got to increase.
And I, and I would add that we probably won't wait for as many years to consider another fee increase as we have this time. It's just one of those management, you know, and operational issues that it's kind of a learning process for, for some of us as well and, you know, we're catching up with, with ourselves here.
Would you see that be annually or so?
I'm not, I'm not sure. It would be that often, maybe every couple of years, yeah, we'd take a look at that. It just probably depends a little bit on, on the market and, you know, what, what other cemeteries are doing and comparing ourselves with, with others in the region. We'll take, we'll take a look at it, certainly more regular than we have been.
Right, sure.
You'll, you'll see it also too, I mean, given, I think the space that cemeteries take is, there's a lot of creative ways in which cemeteries are handling burials these days. It just, we kind of have to change the way we actually do business and having us all laid out, I guess, horizontally as we go through time.
Yeah, tandem. Yeah, I see the tandem. And that would work, wouldn't it?
Definitely.
I, I kind of feel like we were talking about insider information. I was at the Friends meeting this morning and heard that and saw how Larry Potter was saying how, even at raising them half price or double, we were still way below for an urban-type cemetery. It's just, but I guess the point I wanted to make out of it is, he was so excited, he had gone to this conference in Las Vegas, and it's the benefit of going to, continuing education opportunity where he could see what other cities were doing and put our things in perspective. And he came back with so many ideas and so, I, I'm just nuts about training.
It's an important.
See what other people are doing. We need to.
Go forth and charge more?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, report from.
Two quick items. I think all of you know I was in the Houston area last weekend and every time you go to another place, and actually haven't grown up down there a lot too, it's still just, I'm just thankful for where I'm at today, just to kind of give you a couple of quick things that did observe. First of all, you got to have, so I have to put it in perspective, the population of greater Houston area is greater than the population of Oregon. And so trying to move around the city like that, it still moves well, but they, I mean, there's a lot of lane miles that have been put in and that may say something, what, some things we need to consider, but the other thing.
Is it transit?
No, not anything of any magnitude to travel the whole inner Houston area that I saw. I will indicate, a lot of those cities, though, you will see that the freeway system has become Main Street and that kills off a lot of the downtowns as we have in Oregon. So I think how we build our systems here is better. Needless to say too, given just the fact that that is a sunny climate, but the amount of concrete and asphalt, the glare there, it's one of the few places I had to wear sunglasses all the time when I walked outside. But what was, and some of the connectivity in lots, I think Dan Nancy's really wearing off on me because you drive into a parking lot and you want to go over there and you had to go back out to the road, was congested already to try to get over there, which was a problem. One of the things though too, that did notice is, did go down to the Bolivar Peninsula, which is across the bay from Galveston, still a lot of hurricane damage there. And in fact, all through the Houston area, you saw debris piles still stacked up, and this is a year after Ike. Bolivar, which was really hit hard by Ike, is a lot of those houses and areas are totally wiped out, even some of the beach is gone. And that debris is now in Chambers County, which is about 30 miles across the bay. In fact.
That's where it was blown?
That's where it was carried, yeah. One fellow even reports riding his house across that bay, but he felt he was going 50 miles an hour, he's lucky to be alive. And also too, the amount of pollution that washed up out of those bays during a hurricane or something. So, yeah, we, we do live in a good place, even with our ice and snowstorm. The other item I wanted to mention is, I believe it is a air conditioning unit at the visitor center has gone out. It needs to be replaced if that's going to be a functioning visitor center this summer, so I plan to take 8,000, I think that's what they're indicating it's going to cost, out of the business license and replace that unit. Regardless of what comes out of the study with CHP or how that operates, that facility has, we've got to keep that in repair. And for the employees who work in there, if that air conditioning system's not fixed, that's going to be a long, bad summer for them, so.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much. We are adjourned.